Is that all set, Marcus?
Yeah. Okay, the Committee on Finance and Law will come to order on roll call. Dr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mr. Fiori is present. The first item on the agenda is review of replenishing the student activity account for Letty School in the amount of $1,207.
So moved. Second?
Most men seconded. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed so voted. Then we have bid openings for milk and paper for the cafeteria.
The first bid that we will be opening up is the paper bid for cafeteria. Again, this is just for cafeteria.
It appears we had one bidder, Mansfield Paper?
We actually have a few.
Okay.
The first one is-
Oh, I see.
Mansfield Paper, correct, is the first one.
Looks like there are a total of four bidders.
That's okay, I can use my- I'm good, thank you.
No, good.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is Thompson Food Service from Runford, Rhode Island, who are also The next one is WB Mason. Conlon is the next one for paper.
I think the report Mansfield is a good bid.
And then, we do have, again, the paper and then now, and also we have milk. I have one here that does state the time, but I cannot see which one it is for until we open it. So I'm not sure if it's for paper or if it's for the milk bid. So I'm going to open it here and hopefully it'll be clearly stated once I open the bid. This one's milk, so it is the milk one. It says it right at the top, so I'm going to pass that here. That's the first one Mansfield, okay. Thank you.
Conlon Products is a good bid.
Okay, so we- Thank you. So all of the bids for the paper were good bids, and now I'm going to begin opening the milk bids. And as I stated before, the first one did not have what it was for, but I just opened, and again, it's listed right here that it is considered to be milk. So the one that was not noted, what bid it was for on the envelope, is noted in the original bid. And I'm sorry, what company is that one for? I apologize.
Cape Dairy LLC.
Okay, Cape Dairy, which is also White Brothers, correct? I think it's at the yes. It's White Brothers, yes. And then the second bid for milk is from Thompson Food in Runford, Rhode Island. And there was, again, there's only two bids for milk.
The incumbent?
The incumbent is Cape Dairy, White Brothers, yes.
Okay, both good bids.
Motion to move the bids to the administration for analysis and recommendation.
Second?
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. Then, the next item is a request for the disposition of surplus art equipment. They're all machinery with regard to pottery.
Yeah.
Motion to dispose of the equipment through the proper ways, either through gov. days or whatever.
Through the proper means, yeah, second on that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. Use the facilities report. Receive and place on file.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so voted. Then finally, we have a bills payable warrant for fiscal year 22 in the amount of $1,413,195.56.
So moved.
Second on discussion?
Yeah.
So I just want folks probably to understand this is kind of a high warrant, a little bit more than usual, 1.4 million. And I think it's mostly attributed to item on page 26 that ends, I'm sorry, ends on page 26, which goes out to the collaboratives, I believe, Mrs. Monahan?
Right. A lot of it is, of course, what was asked, what was granted by the school committee to go ahead and prepay our quarter one district tuition. So that is it. And you'll see also throughout the warrant, we have some other pre-bys that was asked, that was granted by the school committee.
Thank you. So yeah, so just so folks at home to better understand why it's so high, I think it's worthy of a justification or explanation in this case, so I seconded the motion.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. Anything else for the good of the order?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're out of here.
The second regular June meeting of the Taunton School Committee will come to order. Please stand for the pledge and the national anthem.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Thank you, Secretary Fagan.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Pulowski?
Present.
Mr. Enos?
Present.
Mr. Fiori?
Present.
Mrs. Fagans, present. Mr. Viera?
Present.
Mr. George. Mr. Laura. To absent and Mayor O'Connell is not very, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Jim, Dr. DeMello.
Thank you, present. As all of you at home are watching, we're all dressed in our Taunton uniform to celebrate first and foremost the victory of the boys' baseball team just yesterday, I believe it was, who are now in the final competition that will take place on Saturday. Superintendent Cabral will elaborate about that, but more so because we're cheering on today's girls' softball team that's playing at 7:00, and unfortunately, we couldn't be there because we have a meeting, but we are here in spirit, we're there in spirit, and we're here cheering them on, so good luck tonight. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from June 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Ayes have it. Next, Student Advisory Committee report. Today we have Natalie Duncan with us. Welcome, Natalie. Please give us some updates.
Hello, my name is Natalie Duncan, and I am here on behalf of the Student Advisory Committee. We are nearing the end of our first fully in-person school year since the 2018-2019 school year. Next week, Taunton High's students will take their final exams on June 22nd and June 23rd. June 24th will serve as a makeup final day for students who have missed these days. We would like to extend our congratulations to our varsity softball and baseball teams. Tonight, Taunton will face off against Methuen at 7:00 PM for softball, and if they win, they will advance to the semifinals. On Saturday, June 18th, Taunton will face off against Franklin for the baseball state championships. We are thoroughly impressed that two of our very own sports teams have made it to the final four. This is not a feat that should go unnoticed. Best of luck to both of these teams in their respective competitions. Clubs at Taunton High School have elected boards for the 2022-2023 school year. DAKA Student Council and KICOM are among the clubs who have elected new officials to their boards for next year. As I previously mentioned, this will be our first fully in-person school year in about three years. I personally would consider this school year to be very successful. These past three years have been unusual and unfamiliar, but throughout this school year, I watched myself and my classmates around me fall back into normal routines. I regained motivation I did not have during remote learning, and I saw the same thing happen to my peers. This year, we were able to attend in-person events once again, such as school dances and sporting events. The success of this school year makes me extremely hopeful for the prospect of next year. Our new six-period schedule is something to look forward to for next year. The next school year is full of new possibilities that we look forward to exploring. The Student Advisory Committee would like to thank all of you and the Taunton Public School System for all of your time this year. We thank you for this opportunity from the bottom of our hearts. I have enjoyed this opportunity to serve you this year, and I hope I will be able to serve you again next year. That is all I have for tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Natalie. Are you a junior?
I'm a freshman.
You're a freshman? Oh, wow, well, welcome, great, thank you. Anything from my colleagues for Natalie? Nope?
Motion to accept the report.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Natalie, thank you so much. You're welcome to stay, or you can leave.
I have homework.
You have homework, I thought so. Okay, great, thank you, Natalie. Next item on the agenda is public input. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23(c), we kindly request that individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. A copy of the regulation and guidelines we provided upon signup, an individual will be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time each registered individual will have to speak will be determined by the number of people who signed the register and will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting. Ms. Devine, any public input?
There is no public.
Great, thank you so much. And next item is superintendent's report. Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. So it is my distinct pleasure to inform the committee and the public that Jamie Pereira has been appointed as the next principal of the Joseph H. Martin Middle School. Mrs. Pereira has served as the associate principal at Taunton High School since October 2016. She has also served as the assistant principal at the Parker Middle School, and was also an English teacher both at the Friedman Middle School and Taunton High School from the years 2003 through 2015. Mrs. Pereira is well-known locally, and she is heavily involved in the greater Taunton community. Mrs. Pereira also has a deep connection to the Martin School. As a matter of fact, some might consider this a homecoming, as Mrs. Pereira attended the Martin School when it was a K-8 school, and two of her children have attended the Martin School and now attend Taunton High School where she's currently employed. So you could say Woodchuck pride runs deep in the Pereira household. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Pereira to the podium, and if you would also, if you would all join me in welcoming Mrs. Pereira to the Taunton Public Schools' extended leadership team.
Thank you all very much. I genuinely appreciate the congratulations and the thanks. And I would first like to thank Superintendent Cabral, the members of the leadership team, and the members of the school committee for this position that's afforded to me.
Give Mike.
Well, I didn't think there was hazing, but okay. So let me try that again. So thank you very much. And again, thank you to, am I still on? Okay. Thank you again to the school committee members, to Superintendent Cabral, the leadership team that has been through the process with me for quite a bit. I genuinely appreciate this opportunity. As Mr. Cabral said, I am absolutely honored to be returning to Martin Middle School. What an incredibly full-circle moment educationally for me, to return to the school that I was once a student, now as its leader. So I would like to let you know the incredible pride that I have in that moment, and I think about what my parents would think, and think about me returning to Martin, and it's an incredibly powerful emotion for me. So again, thank you. I'm looking forward to working with the Martin staff and transitioning over in the next few weeks. I've been reaching out to them to create an entry plan and gather some intel from them. I would also appreciate maybe speaking with members of the school committee, the extended community, to try to develop a plan that's going to maximize the student learning in that building and create an environment where the culture and climate maximizes that student potential. As Mr. Cabral said, I think about my experience with Taunton Public Schools, and having been an English teacher for 14 years, where as an English teacher, I'm incredibly focused on creating and implementing thoughtful curriculum and rigorous instruction for students that's going to land the best lesson. And then I think as I've really developed over the last seven years as administrator, it's honed in my skills and rounded out my abilities as a building leader and someone who's managed student behavior, and I really believe that that's something that has primed me for this position at Martin. But looking at all those combined experiences, I truly believe that the experience that I'll carry with me the most is that of a Martin Middle School student. And I was a Martin Middle School student for nine years, K-8, Woodchuck, and that is the perspective that I'm going to hold on to. That as a Martin Middle School student is what matters most and will most greatly impact the vision and the hope that I have for that building. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity. It is my honor to lead that building, and I hope to serve you proudly.
You're not going to get away that easy.
Stone trip. We need you.
This is the test.
It's the first test she has, has the obstacle course.
The microphone, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, good. Any of my colleagues have anything to add? Mr. Fiori?
Thank you. Well, I've had the pleasure of following Mrs. Pereira her entire career. She began either with Kohanit or the first year of Friedman, and it's been a pleasure to see how she's developed from the frightened young girl that started out to a very sophisticated and very experienced leader. And I think she's a great choice, and I commend the superintendent for the selection.
Great. Mr. Superintendent, if I may add, again, congratulations. I think what you said is valuable to me as far as offering a time to sit down with school committee members on a one-on-one. Your colleague to your right did that with us, Ms. Amy Monahan, the director of special ed, and I think that's very valuable, because we as school committee members hear a lot, get calls and emails and all that stuff, and it affects every school. And I think it's sometimes important to just kind of sit down, have a conversation, and that's, leave it at that. And of course, you're the principal, you're the leader, and you have another great leader right here, Superintendent Cabral, so I think I will take you up on that as soon as you're ready to have meetings, okay? No hurry, but I'm always available. Thank you so much. Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. Oh, Mrs. Fagan, I'm sorry?
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate Jamie. I go back even further than you. She went to high school with one of my older boys, so I've known her since then, so I guess that's when her career started, where she probably developed a love for education. But I just want to commend you, Jamie, for the poise you always exhibit when you speak, and you speak so well, so articulately. Maybe that's your English background, but you certainly, I have no doubt in my mind you're going to represent the district very well, and I think you're going to do the best you can for the kids at Martin, and I'm sure they will have much success under your leadership, so congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Back to you, Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. So on behalf of the school department, the school committee, and the city of Taunton, I would like to once again congratulate the Taunton High School class of 2022 on what I felt was an incredible graduation ceremony. The graduation ceremony, which took place on Saturday, June 4th, at the Joseph Rabouin Fieldhouse in Taunton, I think was best encapsulated by the comments shared by class president Emma Carvalho to phrase or to repeat what she commented during her speech. "With every historic moment we've endured and every drastic social change we've adjusted to these past years, I hope you took more from this school year than just what you learned from your textbooks. I hope that you will choose to face each day with optimism, fearlessness, and grit, and let us be prepared for what lies in our paths, good, bad, or ugly, and let us be ready to exhibit the power and perseverance we've gained from our time here at Taunton High School." I think Emma's comments reiterate our collective belief that here in the Taunton Public Schools, we educate the whole child, ready and willing to meet the challenges that life will present them. The ceremony included a welcome address from Principal Holcomb. The valedictorian also addressed the crowd, Kayana Barros, as well as the salutatorian, Samuel Schumacher. Also in attendance, and I have to commend the high school administration, Assistant Principal Kristen Keenan, Associate Principals Jason Torres, Jamie Pereira, and Joseph Pomfret. The class was also, also received an address from Mayor O'Connell, who discussed the importance of being gracious, and Chairman DeMello, who discussed his own lifelong journey of learning. Also in attendance were Assistant Superintendent Chris Barata and Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations Brenda Monahan. As our graduates embark on their post-high school journey, please accept our best wishes for success with your future endeavors. Each student has been empowered to forge their own path utilizing tools and skills that they attained at Taunton High School. I am confident that they will surely leave a positive impact on the world. Again, on behalf of the entire school community, congratulations to the class of 2022. I also would like to take this opportunity to apologize to any family, friends, or loved ones who were unable to watch or attend the graduation in person. As a school system and working with the high school, we were committed to trying to have as many family and loved ones in attendance in person inside the gym. That's why we chose to host the graduation in the gym versus outdoors, because we can double our capacity. So unfortunately, unfortunately, the crowd was much larger than we anticipated, and even though we did have space for family and loved ones to watch in the auditorium, it didn't quite work out. So to all those families, I want to apologize on behalf of the school department, and I also want to let future graduates know that systems are being put in place to ensure that this does not happen again moving forward. But overall, it was an outstanding day, very proud, and some of the best speeches that I've heard in the 12 graduations that I've been fortunate to attend as an assistant superintendent and superintendent. Any comments from the group?
Colleagues? I'll just add that, you know, I echo that it was very well, a great time to celebrate, and I think that's what we're all in the room for, is to celebrate the achievements of each and every student. And I think I said it, sometimes the path doesn't always lead the way we want to as soon as we leave that building, but we have support in place, they can always come back. Taunton Public Schools is always here for these kids, and I'm sure that if they reach out to their teachers or the leadership team, even Superintendent Cabral, we're here to support them, so please keep that in mind. Thank you. Mr. Laura?
I was just thrilled and to see the pride and the smile of each student as they approached the podium, the area to receive their diploma, how thrilled and the sense of achievement that just reminded me when I graduated many, many years ago, that there's so much in a person's accomplishment to achieve that level and to say, what is next in my life? It was a perfect day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. And if I may, Mrs., is it Mr. Devine that keeps attendance? Over to Mike, Mr. Laura, present. Thank you so much.
The last item in my report, when I conducted my own entry plan four years ago as a newly appointed superintendent, one of the items that was articulated time and time again was the need to do more with STEM in the Taunton Public Schools. So I'm very proud that four years later, and again, which I feel we're just scratching the surface when it comes to our STEM initiatives, I'm very proud to share with you that we had two elementary school students, middle school elementary school students, who participated in the 7th Annual U.S. Nationals Raytheon Technologies and Venture Convention, which was held in person from May 31st through June 3rd at the Henry Ford Museum of American Innovation in Dearborn, Michigan. I also want to congratulate and thank Curriculum and STEM Coordinator Elizabeth Pulowski. I also want to recognize Mr. Barata for his support and his work to lead our STEM initiatives here in the Taunton Public Schools. Students from across the nation who qualified at state competitions were invited to attend the competition in Dearborn. The top 20 projects from the state of Massachusetts were selected and were forwarded by the Invention Convention last April. And representing the Taunton Public Schools were William LaFave and Sadie Razar. William LaFave is a 5th grader at the Freeman Middle School. He won first place in the upper elementary division at the Massachusetts Fair for his project Ski Sense, which are skis that use sensors, light vibrations, and Bluetooth technology. It's amazing what these kids are thinking of. Bluetooth technology to help beginners learn to ski while focusing forward and not on their feet. Sadie Razar, 3rd grader, Easttown Elementary School, she won 3rd place in the upper elementary division at the Massachusetts Fair for her project, the Holiday Holster, which is a belt that organizes all your gift-wrapping supplies. I think I already ordered one for Mrs. Fagan. Through these accomplishments, LaFave and Razar placed in the top 20 for the state and were the first Taunton Public Schools, again, the first Taunton Public Schools students to qualify for the national competition, competing against over 300 students from across the country. While at Nationals, LaFave was awarded a patent, and I believe this young man's 12 years old, so 12 years old, he's already been awarded a patent for the application from the law firm of Wilmer Hale for his Ski Sense invention. So just to put it in context, there are about 600,000 patents that are filed annually and about one- and about one, one out of two get approved. And this young man, at the age of 12, already has a patent that's approved. So congratulations to our students. Very proud that the Taunton Public Schools not only continues to make noise at the local level, at the state level, but also has a, has a seat at the table at the national level. So very, very proud of our students, and I expect no bigger and better things to come. As already, as, as has already been mentioned, the girls softball team is playing tonight against Methuen at 7:00 p.m. So that game should be starting shortly. Awaiting them is Peabody, and that game will be held Friday at UMass Amherst at 5:30 p.m. Our boys, who punched their ticket last night, will face off against Franklin, who is the number one seed in the state. So you have Franklin, the number one seed in the state, on the boys' baseball side. And the Taunton High boys are the number two seed. They've already faced off during this, during the year, so they split both matches. So this will be the rubber match to determine the state champion. So our boys play Saturday, the 18th, at 6:00 p.m. We want to wish both our teams the best of luck. And win or lose, you'll always be number one in our hearts. And we expect nothing but the best from our kids, knowing that they have our full support. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. Just on discussion, Mr. Laura.
Just in discussion, you know, and again, it's great to see our students so and so well. But one thing that I forgot to know, to make a remark of, back to the graduation, speaking of achievements, I was really pleased to see how many students in, that graduated with summa cum laude, magna cum laude, you know, with a cum laude status. It was just phenomenal. I counted so many students next to the name they had, a little remark, and to see what accomplishments they've achieved. It was perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Laura.
Thank you.
Any comments on the superintendent's report? Mrs. Fagan?
Yes, I'd just like to, to note that William LaFave is the son of Eric LaFave, who's the, is it Associate Principals now at Taunton High School? And, and Lee, his wife, who was, who was Lee Buttermore, who's also, is a history teacher at the high school. And I believe the Razor Girl, that's the mother, is a, that's Sarah Hackett's daughter? Eddie Razah, yeah. And, and Eddie Razah went to high school here. Yeah, she is a guidance counselor, isn't she?
Team chair.
Teaching, okay. So, so their, their, their parents are working with the school system. And I believe Eddie's, Eddie's with the fire department. So very proud of the people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Fagan. So we have a motion on the superintendent's report.
Conceived and placed on file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for Taunton Public Schools Budget FY '23. At this time, a motion would be in order to open the public budget hearing.
Motion, second.
All in, do we need a roll call on this, Mrs. Fagan?
I don't think so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Mr. Cabral, FY '23 Budget Presentation, please.
Thank you, Chairman DeMello. So while we're waiting for the projector to warm up, if, I would just, I'll just walk you through the first slide. So this is the final presentation, the budget hearing, that we will have for Fiscal '23 as a school committee. We are still finalizing a date to go before the city council to present the budget. That is tentatively being scheduled for the 28th with the time to be determined. So June 28th, time to be determined. Mr. DeMello?
Let me interrupt you. Mrs. Fagan has a comment before you start.
Mr. Cabral, we have been through this budget several times. Has anything changed at all that we need to be aware of?
As far as the appropriation request? Nothing, nothing has changed as far as the appropriation request. What is required during the budget hearing is that we afford the public an opportunity to speak during public hearing, which Mr. DeMello has done already. So having met that requirement, the numbers have not changed since we debated during our budget workshop, and the numbers have not changed since the previous, since the previous budget presentation in May. So we are still requesting an appropriation in the amounts, if you bear with me. We are still requesting an appropriation in the amount of $102,720,121.
So we haven't, there's no new update either? The last update from the Senate, the Senate Ways and Means was May 10th. Nothing's changed since then either?
No, actually, Mrs. Monahan provided you with a, with a nice slide. So if you, if you go to Slide 11 in your slide deck.
Do you want to put it here?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So on Slide 11 in your slide deck, Mrs. Monahan provided you with a summary of last year's budget, the initial budget that was released by the governor in January. And then you see during the House Ways and Means, again, no change, and during the Senate Ways and Means, no change. So our Chapter 70 request remains, our Chapter 70 increase stays the same at 9.7 million. The city local contribution increase of 1.9 has not changed, which is a total increase of $11.6 million.
So given all that, and that this is just a, this is basically a repeat of what we've already been presented with, right?
Correct.
I would just wonder, Mr. DeMello, if we should consider not having to do this again because it's, it's all basically the same unless somebody here feels that there's something they need some...
I have two comments on that. First and foremost, is this presentation on the city website that is accessible to the public?
It will be on the website after tonight.
After tonight, okay. So that's my first concern. Secondly, I'll leave it up to my colleagues to, what is your, what are your wishes? Do you want to go through the whole presentation? Do you feel comfortable?
I might come motion to approve the preliminary budget.
All right, I'll second it.
Second. And this will be on a roll call vote. If my members could go back to their seats, please. So there's a motion on the floor to approve the Taunton Public Schools Budget for FY '23. It's been seconded on a roll call vote. Mrs. Fagan?
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And Dr. DeMello?
Yes. So the motion carries. All ayes, seven, zero. Budget has been approved.
Do we have to have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, we will get that. I just want to make one more statement that if there's any public in the room that would like to make any presentation regarding the budget, now is the time to do so. I see none, so we're going to have a motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Next item on the agenda, Administrative Business Staffing Report.
Received and placed on file?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Read collaborative quarterly report. This is informational purposes only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Next item, Subcommittee Reports. We'll start off with Chairman Fiore, Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance and Law Subcommittee met this evening with myself, Dr. DeMello, and Mr. Enos, and also present were Superintendent Cabral and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. We approved the replenishment of the Student Activities Account for Lety School in the amount of $1,207. We held bid openings for the cafeteria. First for paper. We had received good bids from Mansfield Paper, WB Mason, Thompson Food Service, and Conlon Products. And for milk, we received bids from, they were also qualified from Cape Deerie White Brothers and Thompson Food. We reviewed a request from the Art Department to dispose of surplus art equipment. It's material machinery related to pottery, which is in rather poor shape. And we voted to approve the disposition. We received, took and received and placed on file, Use of Facilities Report. And we reviewed a bill warrant in the amount of $1,413,195.56. Dr. DeMello raised a question of the, the size of it and noted that it's rather high because of authorizations that the school committee made earlier to prepay some items for Fiscal '23, most particularly out-of-district tuitions for special needs. And then the committee adjourned.
Motion to accept the Finance and Law.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you, Chairman Fiore. Next item, Secretaries' Assistance Subcommittee Report. Chairman Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Secretaries' Assistance Subcommittee met on June 7th with the negotiating team. Our committee members were myself, Mrs. Fagan, and Mr. George. And negotiations are ongoing.
We just move on, is right, or do we have to accept that?
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you, Chairman Fiore. Next on the agenda, Custodian Subcommittee. Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Custodians Negotiating Subcommittee met on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Committee consists of myself, Mr. Laura, and Mr. Enos. We exchanged and discussed proposals, identified tentative agreements. And our next meeting date will be on June 29th. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Viera. Wishes of the committee?
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Next, Unit A, Teachers Subcommittee. Secretary Fagan?
Teachers Subcommittee met with the teachers on June 9th of 2022. Myself, Dr. DeMello, and Mr. George were present, along with the administrative team. And negotiations are ongoing. That's, you know, that's the thrust of my report.
Wonderful.
And we have some more meetings set. I don't have the dates right now, but we have a few more going.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you, Secretary Fagan. Next item on the agenda, New Business. Formation of New Bargaining Committee Registered Behavioral Therapists. Superintendent Cabral, can you?
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. So in, in the weekly update that I provided the committee, I believe I made you aware, and this group agreed to recognize the RBTs, the Registered Behavioral Therapist, right to unionize. In discussing this matter with Attorney David Gay, our legal counsel, he suggested that we place this item on the new business and either have members of the committee volunteer to serve on this bargaining board, or have members of the committee nominate individuals on the committee to serve on this bargaining board, similar to how we formed other bargaining subcommittees, which consist of three members. My recommendation would be that individuals with experience bargaining with the educational assistance and individuals who have experience bargaining with the teachers may want to consider volunteering or being nominated to serve on this board, as well as someone who's new to the committee so that they can gain experience when it comes to collective bargaining.
Do we have any volunteers? Mr. Laura?
I would like to volunteer for that subcommittee.
Mr. Laura would like to volunteer. Mr. Viera?
I would also like to serve on that subcommittee.
Mr. Viera?
And being, having served...
Whose hand was up first?
I don't know.
She was.
Secretary Fagan was up first?
Well, I'd also like to volunteer because I've served on both the teachers and the secretaries and assistants the whole time. So I, I don't know if anybody wants to do something different.
Secretary Fagan, can we have four on this, or just say a three?
That's a good question. That would be, I am...
They're all three?
They're all three.
Right.
And I, although, now that we have three, I would ask, maybe there's a motion or if somebody wants to nominate to serve as the chair, that would be appropriate as well.
Is there a nomination to serve as chair?
I would like to nominate Secretary Fagan.
Secretary Fagan, nominations on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So committee will consist of Mr. Laura, Mr. Viera, and Secretary Fagan. And Secretary Fagan will serve as chairperson. Good?
Good.
Good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, City Council FY '23 Budget Presentation. Superintendent Cabral?
So as mentioned during the budget hearing, we have a tentative date, for those of you who wish to attend, June, Tuesday, June 28th. I've been contacted by Council President Philip Duatt regarding June 28th, where we will present our budget to the city council. I will confirm that this is a definite with the rest of the board once I have figured out logistics with Council President Philip Duatt.
Thank you, Superintendent. So if it does become a firm date, please let us know as soon as possible. It has been custom that many members have attended. That, of course, is up to you. If you schedule permits you'd like to attend, you don't have to tell us today. You can just show up or just give us a call that day. Mr. Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is the proposal? What is the anticipation of presentation of? Because we have some public meetings in our discussion of budget. Do you know what the council's intent is to have you before the council?
Yeah, it's very similar. What we've done in the past is I attend, Mrs., Assistant Superintendent Monahan will attend, and then members of the school committee attend to show support. And I present the budget presentation. Actually, the presentation that you received tonight will be the budget presentation that we present before the council.
Wonderful. Any other questions?
Clarification.
So of course, superintendent will let us know if it's a firm date on June 28th, which is a regular school city council night, and it'd probably be, is it in the?
I'm hearing 5:30.
5:30, so it's probably before the regular city council meeting.
Committee, the whole is that possible?
But we will let you know either through Mrs. Devine or Superintendent Cabral. Thank you so much. Next item, Unfinished Business Action Items Update. First item, Review Situation Involving Third Reading of Pre-K through 12 Director of School Counseling and Therapeutic Supports. Mr. Cabral, Superintendent Cabral?
So in your packet, and obviously based on the level of discussion that we've had regarding disposition, and based on the fact that there was some confusion regarding whether last meeting was the second reading or the third reading, on the agenda, it was listed as a second reading, but to my recollection, it was actually the third reading. So I wanted to make sure that we were following the appropriate protocols and that the vote that we took was indeed the correct vote. So after this, reaching out to Legal Counsel David Gay, in the second paragraph, you'll see with Attorney Gay summarizes the issue and recommends that we put this item on the agenda again and vote again because the way it was posted on the agenda would lead the public to believe that there would be a third reading. So if they wanted to attend and provide input or hear the school committee debate the position, they would have had one more opportunity to do that. So even though the vote was appropriate, the posting was, it was not appropriate. So the recommendation in which we've listed it, we've listed it under unfinished business number two would be to go into the third reading now and hold a new vote. So that is the rationale behind why I am discussing this and the recommendation from Legal Counsel on how to do this correctly. Because now the public has had every opportunity to attend and hear the debate if the school committee wishes to debate this further.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. Are there any comments from the committee?
So this is the third reading.
This is the third reading now.
So a motion to advance it to the third reading.
Hold on one second, Mr. Enos. We're gonna go on. That's the next item on the agenda, so we're going to get to that in just a second. Any other comments from the committee on the point that Mr. Cabral just brought up?
Clarification. The intent, is there a vote needed tonight to move on to the third reading?
Once we get to that item on the agenda.
There will be, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Cabral, for that explanation. As you all know, I was not here for that meeting, but I was able to stream it live from wonderful Frankfurt, Germany at midnight while you all were here debating it. And there were some definite confusions on some parts, and I think it was best that we reach out for legal opinion. Legal opinion has been rendered. I am very satisfied that it's on tonight's agenda, which will be the next item. So that's where this all stemmed from because if you look back at the tape, it was a little confusing. So thank you for doing that, Superintendent Cabral. Next item on the agenda, Pre-K through 12 Director of School Counseling, Therapeutic Supports, Job Description, Third Reading.
Move to table.
Is there a second?
Just for discussion, I'll second that.
There's, there's no discussion.
There's no discussion on the table.
And I will say the reason is...
There's no comments, Mr. Fiore. It's tabled. Any, any, is there a second on the floor? Seeing no second?
I would do my second.
You never did second. Is there a second? Seeing no second, we're not tabling the item. So Item 2, Pre-K through 12 Director of School Counseling and Therapeutic Supports, Job Description, Third Reading.
Motion to move the job to a third reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I do have some discussion. So as we all know, I've been very vocal about disposition. I have spent numerous, I wouldn't say hours... I have spent numerous, I wouldn't say hours, but numerous minutes, because we don't speak at hours at length, for the superintendent. I've been in the room discussing the revised and final copy, which we all have in our packet, which I am satisfied with. I guess what I was opposed to was, was all these changes and not enough clarity to understand what the function of this job was. So based on the new job description that's in our, in our packet tonight, I will, of course, be supporting this. So I just want to clarify how things have come to change and my vote, which will be rendered based on the second. So all in favor?
Aye.
On a roll call.
I'm sorry, on a roll call vote. Secretary Fagan.
We're voting just to move it to a third reading. You need a roll call?
No, this is the third reading.
No, this is the third reading.
Oh, okay, I thought you had to, all right, I'm sorry. I thought it was two separate motions.
Secretary Fagan, roll call, please.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes present. Mr. Vera?
Present.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
And Dr. DeMello.
Yes. I have five yeses to present. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Secretary Fagan.
And I just want to know, everybody to know that I will be supporting this position as far as, and would like to be involved with the interview process with the individual. This, we've always, we have an agreement that even if we're concerned, I have, I have a few concerns about it, but I'm going to support what the school department does. So I want everybody to know that. And I'm sure you feel the same way, Mr. Vera.
Yeah, absolutely. I support the leadership team, the superintendent, the position going forward, absolutely 100%.
So what are you, what's your thought process Superintendent?
Yeah, actually, a couple of things. I'm reminded of a comment that I made during the debate because I get passionate about these positions. So I hope when I made the comment that if it's, that this committee in the past, when, when something is good for children, we should do it or they do it. I don't want that to be construed in the public, that just because you didn't vote for a position or just because you voted present for a position doesn't mean that you don't believe in doing things that's good for kids. So I, I want to apologize to the committee if I made anyone feel that way because that is not my intent. Again, I was, I'm passionate. I feel strongly about this position. And I believe it's going to do, it's going to really help our students and support our staff. And I also understand that there are going to be times where we debate certain items. We're going to have to just agree to disagree and still maintain a professional working relationship moving forward. So the, the thought process will be to form a screening committee that will constitute of school administrators, some staff members, maybe some parents, potentially maybe a student, similar to what we've done in the past when we put together a comprehensive screening committee. I'll have the HR office reach out to members on the school committee who would like to serve. Because I do want the school committee to have a voice, knowing how passionate and the level of debate that was around this position, so that we can weigh in and really identify the person who can help to address the mental health and behavioral needs of our students.
Excellent, thank you Superintendent Cabral. Yeah, no, and again, I don't want to repeat myself, but better understand the position, I think it's critical. And I know that every member here supports the kids. And what we want is the best for the kids. And I'm sure we're going to hear very, very soon some new and exciting developments. As you all know, we meet on a bi-weekly basis with Secretary Fagan, myself, Superintendent Cabral. So we're always looking for new and exciting adventures to support the kids, our staff, because it's all one big community to make it better. So stay tuned. Next item, action item review. Do we have anything that we need to dispose of?
Not at this time, Dr. DeMello. But I will have an update regarding the preschool expansion. I have a report, but I forgot to bring it with me because I want to provide a committee, the committee with an update on, on our expansion, that we've added a classroom. So I will provide you with an update at the next regular meeting on July 13th.
Very good, thank you Superintendent Cabral. Anything, yes, Mr. Laura?
Superintendent, are you referring to the four-year-old elementary expansion? Thank you.
Do we have any action motion on this action item, just to receive? I'm sorry, Mr. Fiore?
Well, no, I had something else I wanted to raise before I went into executive session.
Okay, anything else on action item, just receive and place on file?
Received and placed on file.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to mention, Mr. Laura commented on recollection of his own high school graduation. It happens at the time of his graduation, I had just been promoted to the rank of First Sergeant in the Taunton High School Cadet Corps, and I was one of the ushers for that. And I did want to put to rest any rumors that we had trouble recruiting ushers because some of them were headed down to Gettysburg at the time.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore, for making my night. You do, you do it every Wednesday that we meet. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Mrs. Mrs. Fagan, you want to add to the Gettysburg address?
I don't think so. I don't think anybody can do it better than Abraham Lincoln did.
Okay. Were you there? No, you weren't.
No. Starting to feel like I was. I have one comment. We had a building meeting this morning and I, Mr. Cabral and I took the trip together to go to Holy Cross yesterday.
God bless you, Mr. Cabral. I mean, was it a safe trip? I'm sorry.
I've been on road trips with him before. We went to visit schools when they were doing them down in.
Literally a trip.
It's tough being the only woman on this committee. Anyway, we had been talking, I was telling Mr. Cabral that, you know, that sign in front of Mulcahy School that got vandalized, it was, after you left, it became a topic of discussion. And apparently, for some reason, I thought that was like some real honest-to-goodness granite there that we could just kind of get some, a stone cutter to come in and put something in there. Because when it's, the sun is shining, you can't even read those letters. The glint that comes off of them is unbelievable. And I found out that that was never made to support anything like a granite thing like you did out on Norton Avenue. It's basically some composite of cement or something. And they can't do that inside the stone. And it wasn't made to support a piece of granite. So your and I, your dream and mine of maybe we could have nice, you know, lettering like somebody that knows what they're doing is doing, that's kind of going south. So I don't know what they're going to do with that. They're going to look into different things. Oddly enough, though, Rick Ames said the same thing. He thought that that would have been better on the, but I guess now, I guess you'd have to replace, I guess, all the letters now because, I don't know, they're different. But they're mounted in with, there's a different type of way they were thinking of mounting them. They're not elevated off the stone. But it's just like, this is like the never-ending building committee thing.
Maybe, maybe Mrs. Moynihan wants to add to this?
Well, she wasn't there.
No, okay. Do you want to nominate, Mrs. Fagan, to fix the sign? No, okay, all right. No, I, I, I mean, I.
No, Mr. Cabral was there.
I think we should just move on, please. We've discussed this over and over again and let the building committee handle it.